Good afternoon. The committee of the whole is called back to order. Only change on the panel is Ms. Vanessa Valencia is sitting in for Steve. Steve's had a doctor appointment. Director Groves had a doctor appointment and she'll be here hopefully this after early this soon. Let me put it that way, she'll be here soon. We will now continue on on our first round with Senator Tidaway. You still have questions? You have 3 minutes and 3 seconds left.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I have an opportunity to talk with OFB to discuss my question. Moving forward, I think with any legislation that's being passed and adjusting any kind of revenue that we reflect that it's 852 on the projected revenues and moving forward if it's going to be increased, we increase from 852 and not 831, you know, just sustained by. Mr. Byrne, are we in a, do we have a deficit in the government of Guam?
No, ma'am.
No deficit, so that means you have paid off the $20 million that we appropriated to the hospital? That's the one that we did in, I think it was FY '21?
That was FY '22.
Twenty-two.
And was dependent upon the issuance of the audited financial statements, which hasn't taken place yet.
Financial statements, so that's still on the books? Twenty million, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so it's still on the books. Mr. Byrne, are you aware that in FY '21 excess revenue of about, was about 61.3 million in FY '21? And after the audit was done for FY '21, it actually went down to 30 million, almost 50% below what would the estimated projected revenues were for FY '21. Are you familiar with that?
No, well, I would have to refresh myself by looking at the numbers, but I would remind the senator that there's a difference between collected revenues and earned revenues, and that might account for the difference. And the 30 million that I think you're referring to is the net, net excess of revenues over expenditures.
According to the OPA, we were 30, 50, almost 50% below the estimated excess revenue projections. So, that being said, in FY '22, it was excess revenue of 161, and I bring up excess revenue because that's actually the money that we're going after right now. Okay, so in FY '22 was excess revenue of about 161. So far, we've collected 145 million, and it brings us in a little bit short of about 20 million. This information that I got, I got from OFB. So are you familiar with that for the FY '22?
I don't recognize the
The numbers?
The numbers of 161, no. Perhaps OFB could enlighten us.
Okay. Vanessa, are you familiar with this? I know Steve is not here, but.
Could you repeat the question, please?
Okay, stop the time. I have to repeat it. So it's FY '22 excess revenue was estimated 161 million. So far, we've only collected 145. That was a short of $20 million.
For FY 2022, I'm sorry, Senator, I don't have the schedule right now. Steve does.
Okay.
So hopefully when he comes back, he can explain that further.
Okay, he can explain it. And then FY '23, the estimated excess revenue of $45 million was projected to come in around March 31st. However, we're starting to show a decrease in those projections. Do you think April is actually going to be a better month, Mr. Byrne?
April is, February and March are usually slower months. April is usually a much more lucrative month because that's when the personal income taxes are due.
And what do you project as far as any increase there?
I wouldn't be able to give you a number at the moment.
Okay, are you, are you in agreement that we are trailing lower than what was, or yeah, trailing lower than what was projected for FY '23?
Well, for FY '23, we've already brought in, I'm not, I'm not sure I'm really following you because we're at 862 million in collections, which is like 60 million more than the originally forecast revenues.
Okay. And do you think that we are based on those projections and what it's trailing right now? Do you, do you think that that's, that momentum is going to continue?
As I say, it's hard to predict future months. The CRER only reflects the realized excess revenues, as you called it, until later in the year when a more firm prediction can be made. But I, but I do think that, as I say, that April is going to be a much more lucrative month than February and March.
In your professional opinion, as an accountant, how much do you think that there should be in, you know, just to give that leeway? Because like FY '21, we were 50% below excess revenue projections that we, in September, we went 50% below that amount, and then in 2022, we're showing like 20 minute, 20, $20 million short. So in your professional opinion, Mr. Byrne, how much funding should we maintain in that excess revenue projection? Because the special funds is trailing $8 million short this CRER report, 8 million short.
Well, first of all, Senator, I'm not sure I follow the OPA's numbers. The 30 million is a net of revenues and expenditures. I'm not sure how you arrived at those numbers. I'm not going to disagree with you that some cushion makes us all more comfortable. But I don't, but you know, the original budget that is passed by this body is a balanced budget. The, the estimated revenues equals the estimated expenditures. So at that time, we have no cushion, basically. As we go through the year, we've been fortunate enough to garner additional revenues, and some of those revenues have already been appropriated, and we're talking about appropriating further revenues today. If you're, if you're only comfortable with, with a reported surplus, right, you know, a surplus of 30 million is nice and comfortable.
30 million?
30 million's comfortable.
For a surplus.
For, for the whole year.
Right, yeah. Based on history, based on what's happening here, and I'm sure Steve is going to, Mr. Chair, when Steve gets back, he can confirm these numbers with us, for the body, to understand where we fell short in the past years, and then hearing from Mr. Burns that, you know, having at least 30 million in, in there for surplus at the end of the year is, is comfortable because you never know what's going to happen. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Senator Tidaway. Senator Luan, do you have any question for the panel?
Yes, Mr. Chair, thank you. It's going to be short, and I just kind of want to simplify some things. Good afternoon again, panel, Vanessa. Thank, thank you for coming. Mr. Byrne, you, you said earlier this morning that we were tracking collections about 10 million a year? I mean, I'm sorry, a month?
That was an average.
An average, but it can go up and down, yeah?
It can certainly go up and down.
And you were asked as well whether, whether, whether we'd be able to afford the, the 15 million? You said there's a possibility?
Based upon the trends that we're seeing at the moment, yes.
Okay, Steve had also said that he wouldn't know for sure based on, on other appropriations that, I'm paraphrasing basically, that maybe he wouldn't know until towards the end of the fiscal year whether or not there'll be enough funding for that?
Well, there's nothing as certain as certainty, you know? When we get to the end of the fiscal year, we draw a line, and we know exactly what the numbers are.
Okay, so, so we don't know actually if there's $15 million in there for, for this LEAP program? Is that what we're saying? We're not, we're not sure at this point?
Nobody can be sure. As I said in answer to Senator Tidaway, we start out the year with the assumption that there's no surplus at all. During the course of this year, we've earned roughly 60 million more in revenues than we estimated at the beginning of the year. It's, it's a, it's a hopeful, useful, encouraging trend, and I don't know of anything that would necessarily disrupt that trend.
Okay, no, because I, I mean, again, I remember a few weeks ago, in the 22%, basically it was said that, you know, the sustainability of, of the 22% was, 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 was pretty solid with that. And so I'm, again, that being pretty solid, and this being 15 million, I'm saying now this is not sounding as, as solid as, as what was once said a few weeks back.
I think, Senator, that was in response to the sustained over the years ability to maintain the, to maintain the 20%, not, not just the short period that we're talking about during the remainder of this fiscal year.
Okay, so again, with, with the 15, 15 million in your estimate, what will be the soonest that this can be dished out, basically?
Well, we've already, it depends on what else goes on and whatever else the legislature may do, but we've already got 10 million of it. So we're well along the way to being able to disperse these amounts as quickly as possible. And that, of course, it depends upon the ability of GIDEA to process the applications. And my colleague here will be able to comment on that.
Well, I mean, I think, because, because GIDEA has, maybe they'll probably have repeat, repeat applications and, and maybe some new ones that may, may apply at this, at this point and qualify, but I think they have the system pretty much in place already. So it's not, it's not a startup.
Well, maybe you'd like to ask GIDEA that yourself.
Yeah, no, but, but that shouldn't be a, a, actually, it may be a slight delay, but not a, a funding delay. Maybe a process delay, but not necessarily
It would be a process delay, yes.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, Senator Luan. Madam Vice Speaker, do you have any questions for the panel?
Yes, it was Masi, Mr. Chair, and I know that the previous speaker did kindly touch on one of the questions that I wanted to ask, but maybe just a reiteration, Mr. Director, Mr. Byrne, on the, the projection on the surplus and where, how we're tracking it, and if you can give me a full reiteration from, from the fiscal year to, to date, what are we, what are we looking at?
Yes, Senator, as I indicated before, we're about 62 million in excess of our originally forecast revenues. Some of those revenues have been appropriated, and based upon the additional appropriation, the CRER is reporting that for the month of, of March, we were, we'd actually collected another 10 million above the assumption that we made when the two bills were passed last month. That trend, and as, again, I would want to remind senators that February and March are not good collection months, but April, because of the tax collections that are due on, on April 15th. April is usually a very good month. Based upon that, I think that you can reasonably conclude that collections are going to not only be sustained, but certainly for the month of April and May are going to be further in excess of what we've already collected and what was estimated for the month. So that trend, which I mentioned of roughly 10 million excess collections a month, looks to be sustainable for the remainder of the financial year.
For the remainder of the fiscal year?
Fiscal year, yes.
Right, so 10 million dollars this month, 10 million dollars next month, to that effect?
On an average.
On an average?
Yes.
Okay. And then just one more question to that, Mr. Chair, and as I, Mr. Chair, as I look at both bills and seeing how it could positively impact our community, it's trying to find the viability to see how both, both legislations that are before us can work. So if you don't mind, I'll ask one more question. I do know that as, I, I do know that as we look at alternatives or do, as we look at funding sources and how we can move forward, I think a question that I'd like to ask, and I know the governor has full purview on this, is where are we at with the ARP funds? And are we at a plus? Where are we at today and, and based on what's encumbered and what's expended and the timeline that it, that we have to utilize it before we return it if there's any extra, and I hope not. So please.
Okay, well, certainly it's not our goal to return any ARP funds because we haven't been able to spend them. As you, as you know, we, for the main ARP funding, we received just over 600 million, it's about 602 million. All of that has been allocated. There's no unallocated ARP funds. The governor has indicated that she would be amenable to providing 5 million in ARP funds in support of this bill, which is basically going to come from unused GIDEA allocations, like unused economic diversification funding. And there's a whole, there's about 15 categories, which when added together is sufficient to provide the 5 million to which she indicated she would be able to provide towards funding for this bill.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I thank you, Mr. Byrne, for that. I truly appreciate the answer. Mr. Chair, I'll yield back to you, but in the efforts of just sharing my personal sentiment is how can we work on, on providing the best for our community from, from, from the resident's perspective and also from the business perspective? And I think that, that, that this body has two good bills in front of us, and how can we have them work harmoniously together? So that's my intent, and I want to thank you. I yield back to you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Vice Speaker. Senator Amanda, do you have any questions for the panel? None. Senator Perez, do you have any question for the panel?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I just maybe want to ask the question a different angle. So recently passed legislation to fund the general pay plan as well as, you know, the infrastructure for the schools. You know, if we pass this bill as is, do we run the risk of taking away funds from these other projects?
No, Senator, not from my point of view.
Okay, how, how would you explain that? Or how would, why do you, why is that? Why do you think that?
Well, if, if I can refer you to the CRER, the, the revenues that were assumed when those two bills passed, and that was the burden of the discussion this morning, total 852 million, and we've already collected 862 million, which is the source of the 10 million excess. So we've not only collected the funding that was sufficient to fund those two bills, but we've also collected a little bit more.
Okay, so if I understand correctly, there's 10 million that hasn't been appropriated from that amount that has been collected? Of the 62 million that has been collected above the adopted levels, is it, is there 10 million currently?
There's 10 million excess revenues, excess over the assumed, assumed revenues which were appropriated, yes.
Okay, and we're, we're taking into account the general pay plan as well as the infrastructure for the schools? Does that include 30 million for the schools or is that the 20 million for the schools?
20 million, because the governor line vetoed the 10 million.
Okay, so you're saying that the, of the ARP funds, so in one of the, I guess, reports, there was, I think, believe 100, what is left of the ARP funds that hasn't been spent?
I think the report came out either late Friday or, or early Monday from BBMR for the period ended April 30th, and the expenditures are just over 338 million with about 20 million and a half in encumbrances. So there's a balance of 228 million, roughly.
Okay, and you stated earlier that it's already allocated, so that all has been handed out to the agencies?
No, no, Senator, it's just been allocated. It's not been spent yet.
So it's still a chance to reprogram that?
Well, if the governor so chooses, yes.
Okay, all right. Okay, a question for GIDEA. So I did take a look at the recipients of the LEAP, and, yeah. What was the criteria? Can you explain what the criteria was, and are you planning to change the criteria for this round?
So, so with regards to LEAP, the way it worked is, this actually worked with all of our small business assistance programs. It was based on a business interruption percentage. So a broad spectrum of businesses were allowed to apply. There were a few exceptions as to who were ineligible. So for example, a passive income type business, so a landlord that's just renting out apartments, you know, shell companies, business like that, or even like a, a national chain that wasn't owned, like it wasn't a franchise on Guam, it was owned off island, those businesses were not eligible to apply. But in general, a broad spectrum of businesses of all sizes were eligible to apply for the program. The way that we ran every single program was we looked at a, a pre-pandemic period of gross receipts. So that period was right before the initial lockdown. So that was like April 2019 to March 2020. We looked at the gross receipts earned by a business during that time, and we compared it to a pandemic period. That shifted with the program. For LEAP, we looked at April 2020 to March 2021. So we looked at that first year of the pandemic. That was our pandemic period. As, also as you remember, the LEAP program launched in the end of 2021, so that was well over a year ago. The, the criteria was basically if a business met the minimum business interruption percentage and they were within SBA size standards for a small business, they had an active business license, and they were either open or planning to reopen within a set period of time, they were eligible to receive a LEAP award. The business interruption percentage minimum was 50% at that time. However, because there was the covered established mandate during the LEAP period where businesses had to provide proof of vaccination for employees and customers, so like restaurants, places like that, we had a reduced business interruption percentage of 20%. So as long as the business met that, that criteria, they were eligible, and then their award was a percentage of their average business interruption amount. I'm, I'm sorry, for LEAP, it was a multiplier of their average business interruption amount. So it was three times their business interruption. So if a business had an average interruption of $50,000 after everything was added up, you would take that amount, multiply it by three, and that business would get $150,000.
Yeah, because there's quite a, a big gap between some of these businesses, you know, from a few thousand to hundreds of thousands of dollars. So that basically the interruption was based on the percentage from pre-pandemic times?
Yes, we also had, Senator, if I can add, we had two categories of businesses. So we had businesses that were smaller, so that was a business that had four or fewer full-time employees or full-time equivalent employees. So that even includes like a sole proprietor who ran a business on their own. They were capped at a maximum of $50,000 in that program. And then LEAP, if you remember, was actually a loan program. So the businesses with five or more were eligible for a loan of up to $300,000. Now, the loans had a lot of compliance requirements to it. For example, they had to meet a minimum 60% used on payroll expenses, so that salaries, benefits, insurance, things like that. They also had to come in and apply for forgiveness. We're actually working on a lot of the low, the LEAP forgiveness documents right now for a lot of the applicants because it's been about a year. They had a year to use the funds. But the smaller businesses, you are correct, they were capped at $50,000, and those were considered grants, and they had, they didn't have a payroll requirement or anything like that, but everyone had to maintain records of, of, of the money they received.
And do you intend to continue the same criteria?
For the most part, Senator, yes. So we're looking at the same basic eligibility criteria, the same scope of businesses that would be eligible to apply, basically the same businesses that would not be eligible to apply. We're also looking at, obviously, because this is a much smaller, although still a very significant amount of money, it's a smaller budget than what was approved for the initial LEAP, we're looking at reducing the maximum award amount. Based on a, on a, on a $20 million program, we have some ideas of what the max amount would be for a larger business. We're looking at maybe around 150,000, but of course, that is all contingent upon the final amount appropriated and, and what, what the, the final budget looks like at the end of the day.
You talk about forgiveness. So where's that money going to come from? Or basically, you already handed it out, so you're not expecting any money to come back?
Yes, so basically, like, like how PPP was a forgivable loan program, this, this program was formulated in a similar fashion, and if their loan is forgiven, basically, they just don't have to pay, pay us, pay the government back.
Have we received anything back from the loan program?
In terms of like a, like a, like a loan payment?
Yes.
As far as I know, we have not. The, the overall goal of the program was for everyone to be able to, you know, meet the forgiveness criteria and to be able to get their loan forgiven. So as of right now, we haven't received anything back, no.
Yeah, I'm looking at the list, there's a bunch of individuals. So how did you ensure that they, you know, I guess, did you look at the business licenses and the type of operations that they did?
So every business, every application needed to have the required GRT filings, they needed to be duly filed, stamped, e-filed, so proof that revenue tax received, received it. They also needed to submit a current business license, and they all had to fill out an application form and certify that all the information that they're providing to us is true and correct. And then they also, and, and we took all of that information and we processed it, and based on that, if they had an active business license and submitted all the forms and they met the criteria, we worked with DOA to process their award.
Okay, thank you for the response. Yeah, I think a lot of the questions are asked already, so I'll wait till the next round. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Senator Perez. Speaker Terlachy.
Thank you. Can you tell me the, the current bill says 15 million from general fund to fund the LEAP program, and it doesn't say in the bill, but you've said here, Mr. Byrne, that the governor's willing to put in 5 million for a $20 million total LEAP program. What was the percentage before? What were the allocations before?
In terms of local versus
Yes.
ARPA? So the initial LEAP, it was $25 million in local funding and 25 million in ARPA funding. However, we did, based on the volume of applications we received, we did get, the governor did provide, I think, like approximately 11 million more in, in ARPA funding to cover so that we could process all the eligible applications. So 25 versus around 30, 31, 32 million in, in our, 30, yeah, around that amount in ARPA, 30, yeah.
Okay, so, and there's nothing, and you received the money, right, and paid out these grants?
Yeah, well, GIDEA did not receive any of the money. What we did was we worked hand in hand with the Department of Administration. So we, we, we processed the applications. We determined that the, the application was eligible to receive funding, and then based on DOA's availability of funds, we would send down transmittal batches, and then they would, they would cut the checks for the applicant.
All right, and this program went on for a period of time? It wasn't all paid out in lump sum in one batch?
No, there was a high volume of applications received. We initially had a 90-day application window, however, we had to close that early because of the volume we received. So we, I think we did a maybe 60 to 70-day application window, and then throughout And then throughout 2022, we processed payments with DOA's cooperation.
So over a year?
I would say maybe closer to the bulk over the six, six to eight months, maybe, something like that, yeah.
Okay. So, and you said the goal was that everyone who had been given a loan actually was supposed to be eligible for forgiveness. So we're really giving them all that money in ARP. That was the goal?
Yes.
Right, so I noticed, yeah, there's a whole range of businesses here. I want to talk about that in a little while, but first. So we've established that there's nothing to prevent the governor from using ARP funds for this program and that she was very willing to do that, and that she's also willing to do that again, at least up to the amount of 5 million so far, right? And in prior testimony, Mr. Byrne, you told us that they could not use ARP funds for power credit. Is that correct?
That's correct because it's not COVID-related.
Okay, and is this LEAP program COVID-related?
That is the intent.
All right. So you've also said from the CRR from March, we've received, you know, covering the period of March, and it showed that we have $10 million of excess funds that has not yet been appropriated. So we can use that for, we can use that, right, presumably?
Yes.
10 million in excess funds. The month of April is already completed. And I know the report is not due until May 20, but April's completed. Could you give us the amount of excess revenues for the month of April?
I'm sorry, Senator, I don't have that in my head.
Well, you've been estimating today that you expect at least 10 million.
Yes.
Can you give us a ballpark?
Really, I do not know, it would be a complete guess.
Is there someone at the office who can send it to you? Because I think it's really critical here. We've got two bills trying to use $10 million. The bills right now total, you know, we need 15 in this bill. So the 10 million doesn't even cover this bill. It's not enough. The bill should be dead in the water. And the only reason it's not is because you're here and we're looking to you to help us find where we can get the additional 5 million for this bill and perhaps to actually cover the power credit that the people of Guam really want. So it's really, and they really need, I agree. And so I think it's very critical if we can even take a recess to get that amount, Mr. Byrne, it's critical. Otherwise, we should not move forward at all because the bill's short. Unless we're going to amend this bill and cut it down or the governor's willing to use her ARP funds to cover the balance and we just limit it.
I will certainly do my best to give you an estimate of the number. But the way this bill is written, it talks about, as the, as the,
As soon as such funds become available, right?
So they may, as you point out, they may well now be available or they may well become available. But that is the funding source for the bill, so.
Okay, have you ever seen this type of funding source before?
No, it's, it's,
But you're willing to accept it and you know how to interpret that and how you're going to implement it?
Well, as you know, I just read those words this morning. And I went back at lunchtime and we talked about how we were going to do it. But I believe it's workable, yes.
So if we did this on, for additional appropriations as well, where we said we're going to fund it and that DOA, well, the money will be transferred to DOA as soon as such funds become available from the general fund. That's okay with you?
Well, yes, it's okay provided, and I'm sure I can rely upon senators not to over-appropriate. Otherwise, we'll get back into the deficit situations we were before.
That's correct, Mr. Byrne. And the only way we're not going to get into deficit is if we can get some good estimates as to what we actually have in April, see excess revenues. I think that's one concrete thing we can rely on. And then we can make reasonable estimates of what we can expect for May receipts, as you're asking us to do, and I agree. I sound, that sounds reasonable to me based on past years that we can kind of all agree that we're going to get at the minimum 10 million, right, unless something else goes wrong. But for April, we can actually make it very concrete. And we can pretty much resolve the dilemma that we're in right now. And that is that if we go forward with this bill, there will not be enough funds left in excess funds to fund the power credit. And that's really the dilemma that we are all in, and I believe you are all in as well. And I don't think anyone, not even the governor, wants to see the people not get their power credit. Even GPA came in and testified that they think their clients need that. So, yeah, I don't know, would a recess help us to get that number?
Yes.
All right, Madam Chair, could we just take a five-minute recess?
Okay, your time is up, so we'll move to the next question while,
Oh, sure.
while Mr. Byrne gets the information for you.
If he's able to do it at the same time. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll take a brief recess.
So where would you say we are in terms of receipt?
During the lunch recess, I went back to make sure that they did. So it's being transmitted either today or tomorrow.
What about their money for the general pay plan raises?
It's the same.
Same, wait, it's the same situation?
Same situation.
Different money?
Yeah, different money.
Thank you.
Same process.
I just thought it was interesting that you had, well, the Speaker had talked about this fluky language about spending the money as it comes in, right? And I know that the governor had line item vetoed our $10 million for the Guam Department of Education, which used funds from the next fiscal year or so. And in your opinion, is there any inconsistency there or?
Yes, that, that was, that was an appropriation of next year.
Right.
Not this year.
But at the end of the day, they're both situations, spending money we don't have at the moment?
Yeah, but there's, I, I think that the difference that I perceive to be is that there's no rules at all for next year. That's what you're going to do when you debate the budget. There are rules for this year, and there is a cap on it. So I felt more comfortable with this language. I can't say I, you know, it's new to me.
It's unique.
I have to see how it works.
Never foreseen, right?
Yeah, so far, I don't have that really uncomfortable feeling I sometimes get.
That's, I, is that good to know, I guess? Mr. Baz, I wanted to ask you a couple of questions. So what was the, the, if you could, in just a couple of sentences, describe the intent of the LEAP program?
So the LEAP program was a direct financial assistance program to assist local businesses primarily with payroll costs. That's why it was called LEAP, the Local Employers Assistance Program. It was in response to the pandemic. That is why we look at business interruption. When using ARPA money, the question is always asked, you can give grants or loans to small businesses that suffered pandemic effects. The clear, the clearest cut way of doing that is to look at quantifiable gross receipts and comparing it to do diff, two different periods of time. So that is why we did it. That is why the larger businesses receive loans that had a payroll requirement. Because it was a local employers assistance program first and foremost.
And so would you define a larger business as, because I'm sorry, I'm just trying to recollect what you had asked or answered the previous speaker. Is it any business with more than a certain number of employees?
Yes, for the purposes of the program, we looked at employees, employers that had five or more employees.
And what type of after-award documentation did these businesses have to submit, if any, to GITA? To kind of provide the evidence that they fulfilled the various requirements of these awards?
So in, a perfect example, so for the forgiveness, they would need to submit payroll records. They would need to submit, primarily it would be payroll records, because the first thing we're looking at is meeting the 60% payroll minimum requirement. And then they would have to provide other documents that would satisfy whatever else they spent the money on. So if a business spent, let's say, 75 on payroll and 25% on utilities, for example. They would have to provide proof that they spent that money on, that your, their utility bills for that period of time equal that amount of money. And then all of that gets put together and is, is approved.
So where would you say we are in terms of receipt of said documentation from the businesses that received awards and or grants?
So for the businesses that receive loans that are eligible for forgiveness. We received 168 requests so far out of 233, I believe, 230. As of the, an April 28 report, 109 of them, of those 168 have been approved. And the, the rest are pending and some are still pending submission.
So should I take that to mean that you have received from 138 LEAP program award grant recipients? The proper documentation that shows that 60% of the funds were given to the employees?
I would say the 109 for sure because they were approved. The others may be somewhere along in the process, or they have not yet submitted their forgiveness applications. You have to remember that they had a year to spend the money, so it's coming in as that year comes up.
And so I know that you guys are anticipating forgiving all these loans, but is that going to be strictly contingent upon submission of these documents?
Yes, if they do not meet the forgiveness criteria for any reason, and there's no, you know, no justification for meeting that criteria. Then the, it would transition into a loan. Every, every loan recipient did receive a promissory note that stipulated exactly what they needed to do. Now, I will say the, the forthcoming program we're looking at, we're not looking at a loan. We're looking at it being just a 100% grant program.
A giveaway.
Yeah. There will be requirements, we are looking at maintaining a payroll requirement in the, in the new loan, in the new grant program.
I was just looking at some of the awards, because you know, I was thinking as we headed into session, I know that there was, there was an effort by a few of the members to. Well, we just had a desire to address the energy credit relief bill first. Because I, I just felt like if it comes down to giving the businesses the relief, or giving the people of Guam the relief on their ever-rising power bills, that I would just be more comfortable addressing the needs of the general public before the needs of the business. Not to say that I don't support it, because I introduced a bill about the LEAP. But I, again, I was just going through some of these awards because I felt like I was being put in a position where I had to get out my red pen and, and, and look at how justified it would be to, to fund this program before funding the needs of the, the people of Guam. And I just thought it was interesting that we awarded LEAP grants to strip clubs?
Well.
Club Foxy and Vikings?
They were eligible businesses under the program, yes. They were, they were a, a club. Clubs were eligible to apply if they met the business interruption criteria. Like any other business, they had hard costs, rent, utilities, payroll. So we, we, they were allowed to apply in, in the LEAP program, yes.
Yeah, because again, I just have a hard time if we're going to deny the people of Guam their, do assistance.